All set. I call the Finance and Law Subcommittee meeting to order. It's Wednesday, September 18th, 2019. Mr. Souza.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Also with us this evening Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. First item on the agenda this evening is student activity requests. Once again, there aren't any. Seems like they tend to build up toward the end of the school year. Second item is use of facility report. It's attached. This evening placed on file.
Second.
To be in order. Motions were made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, so voted. Third item is bills payable. And this evening, bills payable is an amount of $800,460.53.
That's a nice round number. Mr. Chairman?
We've had, actually had zero, zero on bills payable. Or cents, that is. Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Monahan, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
Page five. The Del Financial, $446,000. That must be for a bunch of computers or something.
Correct. It is for first payment of the Chromebook lease that we had.
The Chromebook lease. And that's, so is that leased by the month, by the quarter?
Yearly. It's a yearly lease.
Oh, so it's one-time shot?
Well, it's a year. No, no, that's not first year.
Yeah, one time a year. Yeah, one out of three.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, so it's the first year.
Correct.
Which covers all for the first year?
Yes.
Oh, that's reasonable. Yeah. Not bad for a three or four thousand Chromebooks.
Four thousand.
By four thousand and plus.
It sold almost 5,000 Chromebooks that were done over the summer and delivered to all schools.
Set up and delivered.
Yes.
That's amazing.
What a great crew.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set. Make a motion that we pay the warrant in the amount of $800,460.53.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Post, so voted. Last item on the agenda this evening is a facilities update. I don't know, Mr. Cabral or Ms. Monahan. Which one? Ms. Monahan.
To let you know too, is that we have begun the Friedman Complex, or the Oakland Complex, tennis courts being refurbished. So that is being done right now. It should be done within the week or so. The company has been out there this week working on the tennis courts. Also, the other tennis courts at the high school. As I think I mentioned before, we had, some of the lights have been up. We have ordered the electrical meter from TMLP, which that should be in any day now. And then will be connected by the city electrician. And we will go ahead and have a power out to our tennis courts. And hopefully, let's see, by the month's end.
Well, I wouldn't hurry because we can't use them.
I was gonna say, are we gonna have a day?
Well, let's hurry for that, like, nice frost.
Yes, that's true.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna have a nighttime reverend cutting ceremony? I don't, just asking.
Of what?
A nighttime reverend cutting.
For the tennis courts?
As long as we do not have any more mosquitoes, I'm in. Until then, no.
Can you do it in December?
December is fine. We'll wear our Parkers. That is fine.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
Anything else?
Yes, I have one more.
Go ahead.
Friedman Middle School, the gym floor, of course, the students are up there working and playing on the gym floor. Bleachers have been installed. The only thing that is left is the electrical piece to the bleachers. So they just have to push a button and the bleachers will retract and...
Did you have mechanical or did you have electric? When you were at Friedman. You had to pull them out, so now they're electrical.
Like Mott, like the high school.
Okay, so, just one word of caution. Make sure someone is trained on how to use those.
Yes.
Safety switch.
Because the high school used to have a problem with the bleachers because if something were placed underneath them, whether by own purpose or accidentally, and when they went to close them with the button, things would jam.
Yeah.
And it would cost hundreds of dollars to get them fixed.
We've had a great investment in these, so I will make sure that we will train.
Training, okay? And maybe limit the number of people who have a key to...
Mr. Kucha will definitely be the one, the keeper of the key in making sure that things are run correctly.
He's leaving in December.
Well, you know, we've got time.
Then I give him something to do.
Well, maybe even...
And even the custodian.
Maybe a second shift custodian or a head custodian or somebody that you can rely on to close them properly.
Rightfully so. Well noted.
So, Mr. Souza, I see your hand up.
So, a couple of things if that's your last.
Yes.
I had an opportunity to go over to Friedman the other day and, before the bleachers were in, and just look at the floor. And the custodian, Craig?
Was it the first shift or second shift?
Second shift.
One of the evening guys? It could have been Francisco.
I thought I said his name was Craig.
Could have been, what's his name to...
Craig.
No.
I'm trying to think of the third one now.
Rusty.
Yeah, oh yeah, he let me in.
Okay.
I hope he had your badge.
It was a, it's absolutely fabulous. Absolutely fabulous. I just, the pictures don't do it justice, as much as the pictures look nice.
I just did the D-CAM evaluation for FJ Roberts, and it was very nice to go ahead and fill out an evaluation that was full of, you know, just positive feedback on them. And I hope that other schools will be able to use that company because they have done a great job for time.
For time. Ms. Monahan, the other thing I wanted to ask you about was the Bennett School Playground because I was over there on Sunday checking out the situation over there, and it seems to have ground to a halt. And I'm just wondering if that's going to be ready for the kids this year?
So what happened was I was talking to our rep, Jason Corbett, and as of, and the last time, I believe, at the last school committee meeting, I had informed the committee that there were some parts that were on backordered. And they were hoping it would get here a little bit earlier, but as of right now, we are on for September 23rd to continue installation. So that should be next week. And he said within two to three days it should be done.
Oh, days, it would be days.
Yes, so I'm hoping by the end of next week. So the next time we are sitting here, I hope to go ahead and deliver that the kids are playing.
That's gonna be part of your president's report.
You know it, you bet.
Yeah.
He wants to play there.
I think that's what it is.
Well, yeah, I went over to the seat to see if there was anything I could get on. I know, Carl and I remember when we were kids, we used to do those kind of things. The other thing, and I don't think it's relevant in this particular case, but it's not a performance issue, it's a pots issue. But on all of our, even the bid list, we do, do we do a performance clause on those when we go out to contract, if we get them off the bid list?
So each...
Oh, just a bigger project.
Contract with the vendor would have the performance clause.
Yeah. We do, even on a state bid list?
Yes.
So there's always a performance clause?
When we enter, so the bid list provides us with the pricing, but then we have to enter into a contract agreement with the vendor, which would include the performance clause.
I was just curious, the future, if there's, if something, that's a small project, small but expensive, they're all expensive, so...
We, I don't know if it's still being done, but we used to also include in the bid specs that we would seek references and we could include ourselves as a reference.
Yeah.
So if we've had a bad experience with someone, we could say, hey, we're gonna go to the next bidder because, you know, so I don't know if we still do that, but we can include ourselves as a reference.
Yes, yes, thank you.
It sounds in this case, it was just a matter of pots and, you had to manufacture them because the pots broke.
The company has been fantastic and we've used them in the past. And he's very apologetic, but again, it is beyond their control as well.
Yes. Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just one last item before we adjourn is, had there been any skiff marks, skid marks or whatever denoted on the new Friedman floor? Because I heard a rumor that someone was gonna be upset.
I saw him yesterday.
So...
This is off the record. It's not off the record.
So the conversation we had last Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was disappointed to say that, I was happy to say that, yes, that the students are treating the floor with the greatest amount of respect. And I actually got a lot of fist pumps yesterday when I visited Mr. Kucha and Mrs. Pacini at Friedman. The kids were ecstatic, the staff are ecstatic. It's a beautiful facility, which was long overdue, and it just goes in line with the rest of our facilities that we have throughout the city.
Thank you. So it's just a rumor that Mr. Kucha was going around with a magnifying glass checking the floor after the...
I don't know if that's a rumor. He could do such a thing. I wouldn't put it past him.
I heard he probably went up to a hundred times power on his magnifying glass. Mr. Chairman, I just have one more thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Souza.
I'm just curious, getting back to the Friedman floor, I know that there's entities that are going to be using that, I think there was a quilt show coming up or something. Are we protecting the floor or what's our status as far as during the use of facilities of that particular floor? It's a different, it's a different, for lack of a better term, a different animal now.
Mr. Cabral?
Yeah, thank you. Great question, Mr. Souza. So Mrs. Monahan and I have already spoken, Mr. Ottaviano Nelli. So we're gonna, we're gonna limit who utilizes the floor. So, and when we do have functions, we do have the cover at the high school that we can utilize, we'll just ensure that the tables that get brought in or the tables that are utilized have a rubber backing on the, on the, on the bottom so that it doesn't scuff or scrape or damage the floor.
And our, and our staff, whoever it may be, our facilities person over there, our custodial staff knows the utmost, so what they're, they have every right to stop anything that's going on that may damage the floor.
Correct. And most of the time, they're utilizing our tables and our chairs. So we will limit what gets brought in, we'll also limit the type of activities that take place in there. So unfortunately, the softball leagues that would use Friedman, they're not gonna be able to utilize Friedman, but doesn't mean we can't have indoor soccer, we can have basketball and other activities that won't damage the floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Go ahead.
No, thank you, I just...
You mentioned a cover at the high school. There's actually a cover of the Harvard floor?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, we, actually, they've utilized it, TIMA has utilized it during their drills to protect the floor.
So why don't we buy a cover for Friedman?
We can look into the cost of purchasing a cover for Friedman.
Motion to, motion to refer to administration, the cost, to look into the cost of a cover for the Friedman Middle School new gym floor.
Second. Maybe similar to the high school cover?
Yeah, similar or whatever, whatever it may be, whatever the...
Motion's been made in second. All is in favor?
Aye.
And I would just say, because I was involved in purchasing the cover for the high school floor, again, it's a larger scale, I believe the high school's 35,000 square feet, that, just to give you a cost, it was 25,000 at the time to buy the cover for the high school floor, so it should come in well under 25,000. I would say probably half the cost.
Is that made by the people that do the cover at Fenway?
No. So if it comes in under half the cost, we don't have to go up the bid?
Correct.
Build fifty thousand a hundred.
Oh, it's up to 50. It used to be 25. When I started, it was 5,000.
Yeah, but you can make a building for that.
All right. Very good.
Did you second that?
You seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.
Post, so voted. I always, I thought I already called the vote, but yeah, I didn't.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made in second, adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, so voted. We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Meeting called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early night, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to work here.
Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please, Mrs. Almira.
Mrs. Darden?
Present.
Present.
President. Mr. Almira is present. Mr. Chairman?
Present.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan?
Present.
Mr. Maye?
Present. Approval of the minutes from September 4th, 2019.
Board approval.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, so voted. We have Bella Doyle here to share the student council representative report. Bella?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mayor Hoi. These few weeks at Taunton High have been very busy. Last week, Mr. Maddow's held the class assemblies. Here, he along with guidance and our housemasters stressed the welcoming and positive climate of our school and the helpful faculty. On Friday, the eighth grade class assembly was held. Mr. Maddow's displayed a Welcome to Taunton High PowerPoint that had 20 things to know about their new school. This PowerPoint was sent to the eighth grade classes so the teachers can go over with them as well. These assemblies encourage students to start off the new school year strong. Monday night, our student council held its annual jump-in. The jump-in is our first big event to start up the new school year in an exciting way. The students were split up into color councils with two executive board members as their group leaders. Each group competed in the Color Olympics, which is an exciting competition that has five stations of different games that would give each of them certain amounts of points. Students had lots of fun and it was a great turnout. With that being said, my report is complete. Are there any questions?
Motion, accept the report.
Second.
Motion made in second. Further discussion, seen in all, all is in favor?
Aye.
Post, so voted. Thank you. We have no one signed up for public input tonight. Next is the Taunton Public Schools Summer Programs 2019. I'll report on that and I'll ask Mr. Cabral to...
Approval of the minutes.
I didn't do that?
I did.
We approved the minutes. Mr. Cabral, I'll turn it over to you, who I know you're gonna turn it over to Mr. Barata.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Hoi. So real quickly, I want to welcome Mr. Barata to the podium. He's gonna, as we, as we do every year, we like to provide the committee and the public with the summary of all the activities that took place over the summer months. So just because summer is in session in schools, students are on summer vacation, doesn't mean that our schools are empty or not active with students who, you know, are engaged in meaningful learning. So at this time, I'll turn things over to Mr. Barata.
Thank you very much. And as Mr. Cabral alluded to, it really is another school year, but just in the summer months because we recruit staff, we recruit students, we take care of busing and van transportation. Simultaneously, we're also cleaning the buildings around the students taking part in summer programs with nurses in the building and everything. So it's very, very, it's a large undertaking that we do lovingly for, to support our students during the summer months. There are some standard fixed programs which happen every year. Taunton High School offers a summer, summer school program for high school students. Also, our special needs department affords students the extended school year program so those students maintain their education throughout the summer as well. This past summer, we offered 17 different programs from the Enlightenment Project. Many of these, you've recognized the names. Again, the summer school program, Camp Roar, Theater Workshop, 21st Century Program over at the Alternative High School, Title I Programs this year, which took place at East Taunton Elementary. And actually, the Mulcahy Site was up at Chamberlain to avoid the, any difficulty with the construction. Our English Language Learner Summer Program took place. Again, our TPS Boot Camp, which we'll see later on in the program, had an unbelievable elevation in numbers attending. Our Letty Preschool Program, volleyball summer clinics, preseason volleyball camps, and jump shots and jump starts, all taking place. And let's highlight a few of the programs that took place this year. Under the guidance of Ally Golda, our guidance counselor at Taunton High School, we had our summer theater workshop taking place the month of July through August. Forty students participating where they actually worked on three-week workshops on plays, focusing on monologues, seeing partner work, singing, dancing, which ultimately culminated in a summer showcase. Were 150 family members were in attendance to watch the end product. They're basically their capstone project of putting on a production, which was very well appreciated by the families and obviously the students themselves, honing their showcase skills, hopefully take part in our drama programs. Our Alternative High School with Bert Delaney, Principal Bert Delaney, our site coordinator, with their programming, July through August 9th, had 40 students participating. This theme this summer had to do with integrating modern technology in all the credit recovery classes. The use of the Mac lab, computer lab, drones, 3D printers. Again, also partnering with, Mr. Cabral, could you help me with the name? Was it the, the group? Yes.
The Business Partnership Nerds to Go.
Nerds to Go. There you go. I want to put a plug in for them, working very diligently with the students over there. Great partnership here, located in Taunton. Again, those students who really engage in the work, hands-on learning to be applied to the workplace, great offering. Taunton High School Camp Roar, again, Camp Roar led under Ms. Buckley, our ELA Curriculum Supervisor, focuses on those students transitioning from seventh grade to eighth grade, how to prepare them for high school, building connections with staff. Those students are recruited in facilitation with the middle school principals and administrators and guidance counselors of keeping our numbers low but building that positive connection, giving them use to the high school, orienting the high school, integrating some, actually some skill development and how to focus, how to study. Again, at the end of the three weeks, every Camp Roar knows that it cared for, looked out for, and knows someone is there for them in Taunton High School. Basically, a built-in mentorship program of, you already have staff here who know you, who track those students. Parker Power Program, we have Marnie Hinckley, was the teacher and site coordinator. Again, an extension from during the school year into the summer months. Students, 30 of them, took place this past summer. Some interesting activities, fit math class, including, including the drones, healthy living classes, obviously taking advantage of field trips. They went over here locally to Ryan's Bowling Center. Obviously, some project-based learning, literature classes, Boys and Girls Club, they took advantage of the program here on campus, taking part of the archery, the rope courses, splash pads and much more. So it was good, again, not only classroom learning, but going out into the community and taking advantage of what Taunton has to offer. Our English Language Learners, led by Delilah Mendoza, our English Learner Director, again, July 16th through August 3rd, 12 students total. Again, that number may look small, which it does, however, that population needs that support on an individual basis. And again, we're also working with families on how to engage those students. So that number should not look disappointing. In fact, it should be used as a voice of pride because those of our most marginalized students really build that connection during the summer months. And I know Ms. Mendoza and her EL Department are actually looking forward to next year, touching base with families, looking at younger siblings to pull them along for this program next year. Our Enlightenment Project, led by Mr. Gillan and Ms. Palowski, our social studies and ELA Curriculum Supervisors, 75 students took place in this summer. It was inclusive to all students regardless of ability who wish to participate in summer learning programs. They took field trips out to Harvard, Providence College, Institute of Contemporary Art, Museum of Fine Arts in Walden Pond. Again, it's to capitalize on enrichment activities and to let them know what is available to them in terms of secondary education opportunities, along with looking at, I hate to say, the finer aspects of our communities, looking at museums in Walden Pond. Our college boot camp program, led by Jen Andrews, our career counselor, Maureen McCarthy, guidance, Deb Logan and Dave Pupora were teachers to high school. A boon in student enrollment. 99 students took part in this programming. Students received help in all aspects of college application process, including the use of Naviance, the research majors, programs, colleges develop a college list. This is also a good opportunity to shout out to the high school, which I believe last night offered a workshop for parents and the communities and family members about Naviance and preparing for college, which quite honestly, can never start too soon. Students completed the Common App in institutional applications, senior brag sheets, teacher recommendations were talked about and collated. Students received help with college essays, supplemental writing materials, testing strategies, introduction to financial aid and scholarships, and students got an opportunity to go off campus to actually visit Providence College and Rhode Island College, pulling together that whole experience of the paperwork to actually go back on campuses to actually meet with representatives on the campus. And as I alluded to earlier, we had our Title I Summer enrichment programs this year at East Taunton in Chamberlain with Ms. Coette, Humanities Coordinator and Title I Director, working with Site Coordinator Kristin Master Pietro, July 2nd to August 2nd. 375 students participated. That is another program that has really exploded, exploded in terms of engaging students. It's also representative of the needs of our changing population in Taunton because those students all qualify for Title I services throughout the school year. And to be able to bridge that gap in the summer months is very advantageous for students in the community. This whole program concluded with almost their capstone project at the end of the summer program, where students displayed their writing activities, their hands-on activities, where parents and administrators and teachers did walkthroughs. Again, consisting of poster board projects, research papers, PowerPoint presentations. It was really enjoyable to see parents enjoying the work of their students alongside them as the students led their parents to the tables that displayed their work. And actually, some of the work was really of high quality, which is what you want to see, just not work to be done, but actually thoughtful work as demonstrated by the students. Again, we once again had our Tiger Speed and Conditioning Camp with Mr. Masterson, our teacher slash camp director. 203 students participated in this program, touching on aspects of nutrition, workout recovery, biomechanics. Each week, students are asked questions about getting adequate rest, what to eat, when to maximize athletic performance. Students are also incorporated aspects of the anatomy, physics, biology classes they receive in school. So it's reinforcement of what they're learning in school. And the title may be somewhat confusing because one might see, if I see this, that means I must be someone going out for sports, where that is not necessarily so because some students actually got involved in it because they wanted the physical activity. So again, just because this program is this, doesn't mean you have to be an athlete at Taunton High School. It is open to anyone in the summertime to take advantage of that coaching aspects. And our middle and high school band, led by Jim Fry, our Director of Performing Arts, Mr. McKenzie and Ms. Fry, who are teachers. This year, we had 63 students participate, 15 student helpers. Those 15 student helpers are high school students who come down and, and guide the students and mentor the students. Two groups of students, incoming grade six and rising seventh and eighth grade students. The marching band camp was in the evenings, focusing on marching and music and the fundamentals of marching band, along with social connection building between upperclassmen and younger Having a very robust band program benefits everyone in the community. And when you look at the band, whether it's at the athletic competitions or during their shows throughout the year, you have students of all abilities, of all backgrounds, participating together. And when you look at the talents of our music department throughout K through 12, you really understand how they pull and differentiate the instruction and address the social, emotional needs because it's that whole package of actually having to recruit students and retain them in the program. And that is something that's very remarkable, much like the athletic programs, if we recruit and stay with the program so they do yeoman's work with the middle school programs. And again, our final slide was something new this past year. Our Elizabeth Poll teachers volunteered this summer, their summer reading program over Paul Bunker, where the teachers, again, said, "We want to meet the students where they're at," and some of the positive connections they made for students seeing teachers in a different role versus a classroom, and allowing our teachers to see students where they live. And obviously, you have beautiful slides here, and the last slide are some of the feedback from students and parents about it. It's like school, but only the fun parts, which we all like, right? "I learned through this program that learning should hurt a little bit, but sometimes it's the process of learning that is more important than what you actually learn. This is so fun. I wish there was an Enlightenment School." Again, that actually has to do with the Enlightenment Program. "I look forward to the summer showcase, the opportunity to see what all the children have done in the last five weeks. Thank you so much for a wonderful opportunity for my child and all the other children. I love this place. Is today the last day? I don't want it to be over. Thank you for the opportunities and fun you provided this summer." Again, it's a combination of fun and learning. And again, what also I didn't mention earlier, the Taunton Public Schools Food Service Program, which takes place throughout the city, that students are free reduced lunch are fed during the summertime as well to continue that through the summer program. I'm sorry I talked very quickly. If you have any questions or comments.
Mr. Susan, you're impressed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Barata, this is impressive. I had a conversation with the superintendent before the meeting, and I said, "We know all of these programs, and I've heard of them all going on, but when you compile them all together and put them in together, it's an impressive summer with the district is doing." Getting back, I could talk about each one of these, but getting back to the conditioning, speed and conditioning. I know we spoke about this previously, but it's a good point that you brought up about anyone, not anyone from the high school can participate in that program, not necessarily an athlete, because there's aspects of that, life aspects of that, that we train during the, talk about during the program, not necessarily athletics. And obviously, a good athlete is always conditioned properly.
Correct.
I just want to touch upon the nutrition. I remember I was in a high school subcommittee about six or seven years ago, and the girl was talking about, the young lady was talking about the lunches, and she was very conscious of nutrition. And she says, "The only problem I have with the lunches here is as being an athlete is the nutrition needs to get better." And I just thought about that for a while, and I said, "Boy, if we could capture and harness that and she could spread the word about what her experiences are with nutrition and help other students," and it looks like we're doing that with this nutrition at this program. So that's a great thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I've been called worse. Ms. Dorothy?
Well, it's just, I remember the presentation that you made last year and how excited, how exciting it is to hear that there are so many youngsters that participate and the effort, the year-long effort, really, I think you said, Mr. Barata, as soon as you stop the summer program, you're already thinking forward to the next summer. How many youngsters do you know in total? I know you did at each program. Tell us how many in that program.
I would have to, I'd have to go back and count.
I look forward to that. Thank you. I suppose I could go back and count, count as well.
Well, because again, I did not add in the numbers of the extended school year for our students who are on IEPs, and I didn't count in the Taunton High School Summer School students. So if you want a grand total, I'd have to go back and do the math.
I would appreciate that. And I also, just thinking about, because everything was wonderful, thinking about the teachers working with the youngsters and families, I'm assuming, at Paul Bunker. What a wonderful way to continue to reinforce the school and community together, and our teachers' willingness to be out in the community, working with youngsters as well. I think that you're right, seeing teachers in a different context, wearing less formal clothing, I'm sure, summertime clothing, really makes a difference in terms of, and I have a funny story, and I'll share it. I feel like Mr. Fiore when he tells his stories. But years and years and years ago, my first teaching job was in New Bedford, and I appeared, it was at the end of the school year. A bunch of us had gone to the beach. We arrived at school on the Monday morning, and a little girl was waiting for me, and she looked at me and she said, "Mrs. Dorothy, you're all tan. Is all of you tan?" And I said, "Well, yes," she said, "and you wore a bathing suit?" So seeing us in real, real-life terms is a big transition for youngsters. Lastly, I think that it would be very exciting to me anyway to know when the summer showcase was coming along, to be able to have the same experience that families are having in terms of viewing the work that the children have been doing during the summertime. And I look forward to your presentation, as you did last year, on the teacher's summer professional development as well. So thank you very much for you and the staff for your hard work on this.
Thank you for the personal anecdote, Mrs. Dorothy. Mr. DeMello, could you top that story?
Not exactly, but I'm going to try my best. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Barata, thank you so much for the presentation. Indeed, a very busy summer. Since you mentioned it during the college boot camp slide about dual enrollment happening last night, well, I had the great opportunity to be there, and Ms. Dorothy was also in attendance, and the ability that these students have to get college credit while here, and yet they're filling out Common Apps and all these applications and doing what they can during that period. And I was, I was a little bit, how should I say, disappointed to hear that of the two community colleges that were present, Bristol Community College and Massa Sawyer, Bridgewater was also present, and the number of participants to BCC and Massa Sawyer were far higher, exceeding Bridgewater State University. And had an opportunity to speak to some of the guidance counselors, Ms. Andrews, Ms. McCarthy, and Mr. Gay, who were present and wants to know why, and transportation was an issue. So I think that we have a wonderful university, like we do have community colleges, and incorporate this all, and the conversation's already started at the university level. I'm not here representing the university, but I think it's something that should, how should I say, evolve into more opportunities, because we're already doing this college boot camp, and why not continue this even further? And we're doing a maclet job with the community colleges. I mean, the numbers are in the dozens. So Bridgewater is definitely there to support this, and it's a great opportunity for our students. One, and I understand block scheduling and all that stuff sometimes conflicts with the hours that a community college offers versus a university, but it can be worked out. And one last observational comment, you mentioned on two different slides about drones, and I think that's definitely the future. It's here today. I mean, we know that drones can assist in taking medical supplies to places that a vehicle can get to in a lot quicker way to help folks that are in need. And again, I'm plugging Bridgewater, but we have courses developed for drones that become FAA certified. So something that could also be done over the summer, because I know that we have a very vibrant campus in the summer, and drones is definitely part of the future. So it's all positive. I mean, it's all positive, and thank you so much, and it's all good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mr. Martin?
I'm not going to add to the comments my colleagues made, as far as the opportunities that students have, but I was looking at it from a different perspective, and that is, obviously, people in the community who don't have children in the school system support our schools, and it's good to see that they're not just used for one hundred and eighty days a year. They're used year-round, as you can see by all these programs that go on during the summer. So I just want to, you know, point that out, that, you know, the perception out there is, you know, kids go to school for thirty-six weeks, and the rest of the time, the buildings are empty. They're not empty. There's a lot going on. And not only is there a lot going on in the summer, there's a lot going on after two o'clock in the afternoon in these schools. These facilities are used twelve hours a day, basically, and obviously, they're used in the summer based on Mr. Barata's presentation with these summer programs. So I was just looking at it from a different perspective. But again, the opportunities these kids have is unbelievable. Thank you.
Salmeda, and then Mr. Fiore.
Barata, have you considered expanding these programs in the summer to something similar to like what they do at College Gate and College Academy?
Mr. Cabral just gave the signal to respond to that question.
Oh, I would like to comment after everyone's had a chance to ask, but everyone's going to address that and make final comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that. Because it seems like we're doing a lot of overlap, and I think if we expanded some of these programs just a little bit more, we'd be able to keep the students here, and I think we can offer those here, and it would be a great thing, because there are kids, let them stay here as our kids. That's how I look at it. But go ahead, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you. Mr. Fiore was next, and then I'll...
Thank you. With Mr. DeMello bringing up the technology of drones, I got to witness more simple technology this summer with our summer programs. The committee will remember some months back that Mrs. Blenow came in and gave us a demonstration of the little ossobots, and we worked with those and drew lines that the ossobots were able to follow and stuff. Well, my wife was involved with the YMCA tutoring program for Title I at the alternative high school, and she had ossobots signed out for use in that class. She forgot them at home one morning and asked me to bring them by, and because those Title I classes, a lot of them for the younger kids, they're to help build focus for them to be able to come into the school year. And they're just absolutely thrilled working with the ossobots, and the teachers absolutely are thrilled about working with them. And so it was nice to see something that we had demonstrated here actually in action and being used at the height of the summer.
Thank you. Mr. Cabral?
I think you'll get tired of hearing me say this, but you know how I feel about providing students with opportunity and access. And I think what we provide, or I feel what we provide in the summer provides our students with opportunity and access as we eliminate the issue when it comes to transportation. We make sure that students receive transportation. So I just wanted to talk about how, this is the second year you've seen this presentation, and some of you, like me, may realize that it's very similar to what was presented last year. So part of the work moving forward would be to look at ways in which we can expand our summer offerings, or maybe put a different spin or a different twist in what we're offering in the summer. So some of the things that we're looking at for next summer would be some STEAM workshops, or STEAM activities for our kids in the summer, looking at alternative ways for students to recover credit, which will lead me to my comments on how we can partner with Bridgewater University in a moment. Again, some CBTE workshops for our students, not just in the high school, but possibly CBTE-like workshops for our elementary, our middle school students to participate in. And one partnership, because we have such a thriving relationship with the police department, we're looking into running police boot camps, or junior police boot camps for the kids to receive fitness and also learn some forensics, which is also related to STEM. I need to comment on the work of this group when it comes to the high school advisory, especially at the alternative high school, because one of the takeaways was our partnership with Nerds2Go. What you probably don't know, because I haven't had a chance to report it yet, is that Nerds2Go has helped the alternative high school create a computer repair shop down on the ground floor at the alternative high school. So the alternative high school kids will be repairing our Chromebooks and doing some low-level work and developing skills and hopefully becoming a pipeline for Nerds2Go and other programs, or other companies, or other businesses in the city of Taunton. Part of my work during the summer was to meet with universities, Wheaton College and also Bridgewater University. So one of the things we're looking at, and to eliminate the transportation issue, and again, I commend this group. You've never let transportation become an issue when it comes to opportunity and access for our kids. But one of the things we're looking at, is there a way, or can we develop a program, a dual enrollment program, where students can take the classes online and receive dual enrollment credit? It eliminates the need for transportation, and it also prepares our students for education in the future, as I learned during my meeting. Twenty percent of the students who attend Bridgewater State University strictly take their courses in brick-and-mortar settings. Eighty percent are taking some form of computer class. So we need to do a better job preparing our kids for education in the future, because it seems like online courses is the way it's going. So those are just some of the things, some of the ideas that I'm floating, that I want to see come to fruition as we continue to enhance our summer offerings for all our kids.
Salmeda?
I think that's great, Mr. Cabral, but I'd like to see also, especially for the younger children, something with robotics, maybe building rockets and robot-type of things. I think that's something that's interesting to them. Also, I think another program that I'd like to see is some kind of foreign language for the kids. I know, like, it's only three or four weeks, but I, of them getting a foreign language, but I know that the kids over at College Gate and College Academy, when they do that, they really like it. So I'd like to see us expand to those kinds of things, too, to open it up to more students to be able to participate. Because I know to go to those classes at Bridgewater, transportation seems to be a problem for some kids, because if you don't pay, at least this way here, we can keep more kids occupied during the summer. So those are the things that I've been looking at with this summer program. Thank you.
Just a thought that came up in the conversation last night with the guidance counselors at the dual enrollment presentation, and that is, and it has come up previously, courses at the high school level for American Sign Language, and I'm thinking that, as you said, foreign languages, Mrs. Almeda, that offering American Sign Language, kids love to do that. Little kids learn a few words to, and signs in American Sign Language, and doing a summer three-week program for all ages, if that's possible, in American Sign Language, we could make the transition to offering those courses at the high school as well.
Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could just comment on Superintendent Cabral's comments regarding the online version of education. I'm still a firm believer that being in a brick-and-mortar atmosphere in a college environment, college campus adds a lot of value. And getting these kids to acclimate to such a campus, I think, is critically important to expose them to the reality of what they could be having or could be, have an opportunity to have. Again, like you mentioned, access is important. So when online versions are mentioned, I kind of, I kind of quinge in my seat here, because I think the value is definitely getting these kids off of our campus and onto a campus like Bridgewater State University. And we can overcome the issues of transportation. We partner with Brockton Public Schools, and Taunton Public Schools should be right there with us. So I think it's work in progress. I think you're doing the right thing. I know you've had some conversations with key people, key deans and so forth, but the online thing is something that I think that we don't want to go up that route. I know it's part of it. There's a lot of blended versions of courses. Mr. Martin can speak for that. I mean, he's a traditional in-classroom person, I believe, but I'm not going to speak for him. But anyway, I think there's some value to the exposure to a college campus. Thank you.
I could not agree one hundred percent more with your comments, Mr. DeMello. That's one of the reasons why we're busing our high school students to the BCC campus. So I agree, a blended model is what I envision for our students at the high school, because I do agree. The first time I stepped foot on a campus, I was hooked and knew when I was in eighth grade that I wanted to go to college from that experience. But I do believe that we need to prepare our students for the future of learning, which does incorporate an online component.
Just, if I could, just to respond to Mr. DeMello's comment. I do have a traditional classroom, but I do use online services. So I'm using, I'm using both, Blackboard and MyMathLab, obviously for a math class.
Blackboard's been around a long time. No, but I mean, the Blackboard, when I was at university, they had those. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you. This wasn't what I was going to say, but I've also made use of a Blackboard as a student. I, most of you know I was certified as a lay minister in the United Methodist Church recently, and the online courses I took for that were done with the Blackboard. But another interesting opportunity that we need to be looking at in the future, I know the mayor was critical of the Phase One of South Coast Rail, but the configuration of that does present interesting opportunities in that that line is going to be able to access Bristol Community College, UMass Dartmouth, Bridgewater, Massa Sawyer, Quincy College, a whole bunch of them, all along that public transit line. And we need to be looking at programs that can take advantage of that when that comes in a few years down the road.
Thank you. Next, we move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. So I'll try to be succinct in my comments regarding the superintendent's report. So the urban superintendents met last Friday, and one of the topics of conversation was the status of the Fund Our Future bill. So during our conversation, we all agreed that the steps that we're taking during the FY20 budget development was a good first step in helping to provide some time for our legislature, you know, to fully vet the proposal and come to a compromise as far as what will be coming our way, or what will be in the legislature once the governor, once something is presented to the governor and the governor signs. So it's a, it's a good first step, but it's not the end-all, be-all. There's still much work to be done, and I wanted to make sure that the public understood or understands that the funding that we received through Chapter Seventy begins to address the gaps that we have in our budget, and also begins to address the gaps that we have in providing much-needed services to our students. So because of the underfunding that exists in the Chapter Seventy budget formula, which again, the last time it was revised was nineteen ninety-three, now we have to divert, or we have to take funds from certain foundation lines to offset needs in other area lines. And for areas that we continuously talk about is healthcare, educating economically disadvantaged, educating students whose first language is not English, and also educating students who require special education. So by doing that, we're not able to, sometimes we have high class sizes, because we have to divert those funds. So moving forward, the discussion at the table, discussion at the forum, we talked about what the funding would be used for, and what the funding was used, and how we utilize the funding in the FY20 budget. So I want to commend this group. When we developed our budget, now we had the focus of using whatever funding came through during the budget process to lower class sizes, which we did, to address the growing social emotional needs of our students, which we did, through our budget priorities, and also to provide students with current technology that they can utilize in the classroom, which again, you did by purchasing or leasing those computers. What we also need to be mindful of is because we were able to receive the additional funding, we were able to retain staff. We did not have to provide any staff with layoff letters or pink slips in April or May, which then would have provided them, or which would have, I'm assuming, they would have applied elsewhere, so we would have lost staff. So by receiving the additional funding, we were able to retain our staff. And also, moving forward, whatever additional funds we do receive will go a long way in providing more access and more opportunities for our students. Our funding, our supply lines continue to be level-funded in our furniture or other supply lines. Again, we've been maintaining level funding for many years since I was a business manager. And additional funding will also allow us to pursue additional opportunities via dual enrollment, or whether it's... enrollment, or whether it's an after-doc program where we partner with Bristol Plymouth to provide more opportunity and more access for our students to be involved in career volk-type programs. So we're hopeful in the months to come. I heard possibly as early as November, and I did put an article in your packet saying sometime in the new fiscal year that we could see a bill passed. But again, I just want to keep the public aware, make the public aware that a bill has not been passed, there's still work being done, there's still more work to be done. And I'm very optimistic in knowing that whatever, once a bill is signed, that Gateway Community such as Taunton will receive its fair share of the funding.
Mr. Martin?
Just want to comment on Mr. Cabral's comments about the four areas that have really caused the school systems to divert money from programs like class size and so forth to healthcare and those other areas. I think it was, from 1993 to, I want to say 1999, we got a steady increase of Chapter 78, which we used for things like supplies, curriculum revisions. We used to do three curriculum revisions a year in excess of $1 million. And that was consistent, you know, up until about 2000. And right around the year 2000, that's when the healthcare costs started to skyrocket. So when the healthcare costs started to skyrocket, we got less in net school spending because of, you know, the obligation to pay healthcare. And now you started to see the depletion of supply accounts. So it looks like we're trying to build that Chapter 70 money back up to cover those enormous increases in healthcare, to cover the other increases in those other three areas you mentioned, so that we can bring back curriculum revisions like we did back in the late 90s, early 2000s. I just wanted to point that out because it all seems to make sense. And it hasn't been touched since 1993. So it worked well for seven or eight years, but it hasn't been working well lately. And the mayor can attest to that too.
No, it hasn't. You know, I'm thankful that we've, despite some struggles over the past decade, you know, now we're in a pretty, much better place than we were. You know, when I pick up the various newspapers in the region and look at different school districts, we're in pretty good shape. We could always do better. And I think some of it, a lot of it's attributed to the sound investments that we've made, you know, capital investments in some of the fields, the theater and the field, you know, the baseball field. Some of these, it sounds kind of foolish on the surface, but we were able to, you know, utilize these facilities now as funding sources. So it's really helped, really helped grow our programs when, when you look at other places that aren't able to do that. So it's, I'm thankful that we've made some good choices and we remain steady.
But we could do better.
We can always do better, and that's, that's the goal. The city's finally doing better as well. I mean, we're in a better spot now than we've been since the mid 90s. So I'm very pleased where we're at right now. But again, we always strive to do better. We want to do more, more roads. We want to, you know, we want to do more with our public buildings. We want a public safety facility. But those things, and now we're able to at least talk about them now and hopefully get them online. Starting?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cabral, for that update. I was struck in the first paragraph by the statement that is made as a result, districts such as Taunton have diverted funding. I don't remember having a conversation in our budget process about diverting funding. We've always been level-funded in supplies since I've been on the board, so that's not a surprise. But what, where was funding diverted from what to what, or was this sort of euphemistically speaking?
You may recall when we had the presentation in New Bedford, and we did the Tale of Four Cities, and I provided those slides that demonstrated what we receive in Chapter 70 funding and what we actually spend on those categories, that's what we're in reference to. So when we're paying $20 million in special education costs and only receiving $8 million in Chapter 70, that's $12 million in Chapter 70 funds that we have to move to offset those costs.
So we haven't then diverted funding from, as you said, we haven't lost any staff, we haven't pink slipped anyone.
Correct.
So we haven't moved funding away from class-size initiatives, for example. You're speaking euphemistically in this regard because, again, I remember the presentation, I went to that presentation, but it was in very broad terms, in terms of not having enough funding, as Mr. Martin said, for ELL students. I mean, this is in the Foundation Budget Commission Report, ELL, special needs, at-risk students and so forth. So you're talking in broad terms and not very specifically line items, that we have taken money from X because we really have to pay Y and we lose X.
No, it's, I'm speaking with my former business managers head on when it comes to the Chapter 70 funding.
That's reassuring.
Yeah, so, but we have had, unfortunately, we have not been able to build up our supply lines or our technology lines because, you know, the funding needs to be used in other areas to sustain transportation, which is a rising cost, our special education, which is a rising cost. Those are the areas, and obviously the negotiated contracts we're staffing, to maintain our current staffing levels.
In response to your concern or comment, again, going back to the late 90s, we had in supply accounts, I'm talking supply accounts, we had over $1 million budgeted. Now you have what?
300,000.
300,000. We spent 1.3 million dollars one year on computers, 1.3 million. That's in addition to the million that was in supplies. So we had the money to do curriculum revisions on an annual basis. We had money to upgrade our technology on a regular basis. Those kinds of dollars don't appear today in your budget. So you've taken money from those accounts to offset those areas that have skyrocketed, which are those four areas that we talked about.
Ms. Almeida?
If that makes sense.
Mr. Fury?
Mr. Cabral, correct me if I'm wrong, probably we don't need as many supplies as we did in the past because we're using more technology. So you're not using as many papers and pens and those kinds of things.
No, I would say we still need steady number of supplies. In some cases, we need more when you think about some of the, you know, some of the economic levels of some of our schools. But what we have done, and again, this is something that I inherited, something I learned from previous business managers, is that we're able to get into that cycle where we're able to pre-buy and offset future costs by being wise with our current funding. So, matched general law with our budget funding, we're allowed to pre-buy supplies, we're allowed to pre-buy our cleaning supplies. So that helps offset costs from the following, for the upcoming year.
So that's, we're continuing to do what we did in the past.
And that's one of the-
But it's not really showing in the budget.
Correct. And that's one of the reasons why we've been able, you know, to sustain the high level of academics and consistency, because we've been very, this group has been very wise with our funding.
Mr. Fury?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think another thing we ought to be encouraging through the private sector is the last few years, a lot of supplies have been getting into students' hands through charitable endeavors. There are several organizations that are giving out full backpacks that have all kinds of school supplies in them and the backpacks themselves. Church at the Park does hundreds. Matthew Mission has done dozens, if not hundreds. The service clubs have been donating to organizations that provide them. So, well, one thing we can do, even if we're not appropriating a lot of money for supplies, is we can encourage these programs that are getting backpacks and school supplies into kids' hands through private contributions. People enjoy doing it, they get a lot of satisfaction out of it, it saves us a lot of money.
Mr. Sousa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we, I think we're a little bit off track because as far as the supply issue, that's really, but the only thing I will say on that, every year, I've said to this superintendent, I said to the previous superintendent, do we have enough supplies to start the school year, for the school year? And they always say yes. We're not deficient, and let's make it clear, let's make it publicly clear, we're not deficient in supplies. We have paper, we have pencils, we have crayons, we have whatever we need, construction paper, we have whatever we need for the kids. And I've asked this superintendent, I've asked the previous one, the same thing every, during every summer, we're ready to go? And the answer is yes. We may not have what we had 10, 15 years ago, but we have what we need to sustain every classroom in the district. Am I wrong on that?
Correct. And as schools go through their first order of supplies that gets delivered late August, if they need additional supplies and we don't have it in the warehouse, we reorder and make sure that they do have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Martin?
One more piece of Ed reform, when it first started, was, the school system used to get $25 a student for, part of Ed reform, part of Chapter 70 was $25 per student, you know, based on the October 1st report. So when you're looking at 8,000 students, you're looking at $200,000 above and beyond anything else. That went away.
Do you remember student council funds? We used to get, we used to receive $50, when I was a student, $50 per student at the student council. That's part of the student council fund. And that's gone.
That's gone. So different pots of money have disappeared.
Starting?
I just, I heard what Mr. Sousa said, and I don't want to belabor the point about supplies, but we know at the beginning of the year, parents are concerned about being able to have the resources to go out to Staples or wherever they go to buy the list of supplies that are provided to them by the school. So we have supplies, but children bring their own supplies with them as well. I mean, and there are folks out in the community who have drives to fill backpacks for our youngsters, and the church is Church in the Park filling backpacks for our youngsters. So we need to be cognizant of that. So it is a community effort as well as a school effort, but it would be misleading to say that we have sufficient resources to buy all of the supplies all of the time for all of our children, because the kids are asked to bring things in as well.
One last moment. I promise.
I think one of the things that is most obvious to me as far as what we used to do versus what we're doing now is curriculum revisions. I remember my last curriculum revision, not my last, but one of the most expensive curriculum revisions was science one year. It was 1.3 million dollars. We went from kindergarten to grade 12 and revised the entire science curriculum. Basically, anything they asked for, they got. And I say they, the committee that was, Mrs. Fagan used to sit on those curriculum revision committees, okay? And they were big-ticket items, big ticket. And we did them annually. I know we still do curriculum revision, but it's not the kind of money we used to spend.
Mr. DeMello?
Just very quickly, Mr. Mayor, what Ms. Doherty said and Mr. Fury said is absolutely true. The community comes together. But let's not forget that we also have our teachers out there buying supplies. They're allowed a tax credit on their 1040 for up to $500 for reimbursement of supplies. And I know many teachers, including my own family, that do buy out of pocket to supply supplies for their classrooms. That's the only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cabral?
Just one, one closing comment, sorry. So, I will get the triple E, I promise. So just, and so one of the items that always bothered me when I was in Mrs. Monahan's shoes and Mr. Martin's shoes was the letters that would go home stating that kids need to bring these supplies in. So I agree, we don't, we do not provide tissues, we do not provide hand sanitizer, but we do provide markers, we do provide pencils, we do provide glue sticks, we do provide erasers, we do provide pens. So some of the work that I've done over time, and again, it's hard to sanitize and clean up every single letter that teachers send home to their kids in the district. Because I would go, with certain principals, I would work on those letters and say, we provide this, we provide that, we provide this. You don't need to ask for this because this is something that the school department provides. So one of the items, one of the things I've asked our principals to do is make sure that when they, in a good practice, whatever goes home with a child, that the principal should review and make sure that it is an item that is needed or an item that's not needed. Usually you like to use the language suggested or recommended, because the district does provide many of the supplies they need on a day-to-day basis. And speaking as a parent who has received those letters, having two children go through elementary, middle school, now high school, I have personally met with teachers and reminded them, we have that in the warehouse. You don't need to ask teach us, parents, for glue sticks. We have shelves full of glue sticks. So I just want to make it known that we do have a warehouse that Mr. Martin helped build when he was the business manager, that is full of supplies that we put, we deliver on a weekly basis to our schools as they need it.
Thank you. Now you can move on to triple E.
So triple E, thank you. So we do have a link on our webpage with some information regarding where Taunton stands, regarding triple E. So following the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources recommendations, Taunton has implemented a 6:45 p.m. curfew, and that curfew will be adjusted week to week as needed until we experience our first frost. So I do want to also mention that on the website, there is a link that you can access to provide much-needed information on mass.gov that provides guidance on things or measures that the community can take to protect themselves and our loved ones from triple E. So some of the recommendations, obviously, is to use and to rub in the repellent that when you apply insect repellent. Also, to limit your activities outside between dusk and dawn. If you are outside, you are encouraged to use long-sleeved shirts, long pants and socks. And probably most important is if you have any standing water, to discard of any standing water on your property. And last but not least, make sure your screens are functioning properly. If they need to be repaired, have them repaired. So we are taking this very seriously. I commend the mayor and his staff for making sure that the school department receives the latest and greatest information. Also, Mrs. Fagan, who's on mosquito control, she's frequently sharing information with the school department so that we can stay ahead of this and be proactive. I also, Mrs. Fagan?
Yeah, on that note, we had a meeting this morning at quarter seven in the morning in Attleboro, mosquito control. I have a map here. They're gonna, this area, both Bristol and Plymouth County, most of these two counties are going to get sprayed again. And as many takes, days as it takes to do it, they'll do it. It's always predicated on the temperature, on whether or not there's precipitation and whether or not there's any wind. Given that, I just want to, you know, I don't want people to get complacent when they hear we're gonna, tonight they're not spraying, they're definitely not spraying, it's too cold. Once the temperature goes below 58, you can't spray, it's ineffective. You know, it's kind of like taking a fire hose and blowing, you know, shooting it out into the wind, it's not going to do anything. But to be cognizant of the fact that a killing frost, in order to have that, we're not probably going to have one till toward the end of October, the beginning of November, you need three days, three consecutive days where the temperature drops below 32 degrees for at least three hours. So until those things happen, you don't have a killing frost and you still have all these lovely little mosquitoes flying around. My advice to people would be, when you're outside on a sunny day, kind of stay in the sun, stay out of the shade. The mosquitoes will bite you in the shade, but stay away from, well, they go to the cool spots. They're very small, they may have a pin-sized brain, but they at least have, they know where they're, you know, it's survival, and they're not going to stay out anywhere where they're going to dry out. So I have the stuff here, all that stuff you had, Mr. Cabral, I grabbed these papers. I think you might already have them up on your website. But the map, it's, let's see where we're going here, we're Attleboro, part of Mansfield, Eastern Norton, Attleboro, Rainham, Taunton, all of Taunton, all of Rehoboth, all of Dyton, all of Berkeley, Lakeville, Freetown, New Bedford and Acushnet. And Lakeville's in Plymouth County, and Plymouth County's going to also be Bridgewater, parts of Brockton, Plimpton, Halifax, Cava. This is the hotspot right now. So just to be careful with all that. So just people, just be cautious of it, and it's going to be a while before it all stops. But the numbers, the good news, Mr. Cabral, is the numbers have come down. They're at the levels that they, there's a lovely graph here. That was the peak when they started spraying, and they've come down to the, these levels. So it's been effective, but I think because of stuff still showing up, they wanted to take one more hit at it, so.
And as I've told people, I said last night, you know, Mr. Cabral read the recommendations, but biggest thing, use common sense. If, you know, you don't want your child out, you know, at practice at 6 o'clock, pull him or her off the field. I mean, nobody's forcing anybody to be out there, and coaches understand the concerns. So, you know, the youth coaches have been, have been great, the youth leagues have been great, so we just ask people to use common sense.
And the other thing too, Mayor Hoy, the best stuff to use is the DEET. I know all the other stuff is there, but DEET really has, through tests they've done, at least 25% DEET in the insecticide, so. But you can get stuff with more on it.
Sure.
But when you spray it on, just don't spray it, make sure you rub it into skin. I know, what are you going to do?
Thank you.
It's tough when you get triple E.
And then just the last two comments, and again, I got to give credit to Mrs. Fagan for putting this idea in my head. So we are launching a district-wide blood drive, so I hope the school committee will join us and along with the Taunton Public School staff who will be participating in our first annual blood drive. So there's information in the superintendent's report, so if you're interested in donating blood, school committee members and Taunton teachers, please access this information and donate a pint of blood, it goes to a worthy cause. And last but not least, I want to thank Mrs. Perry and also Nurse Manager Karen Regan for coordinating flu- for coordinating flu clinics for all our teachers in all our schools that began this week and will conclude on October third. So all our teachers will have access to the flu shot. And then I have three final comments on the superintendent's talking points. I'm very excited to say that the middle school STEM program called Project Lead the Way is officially launched and up and running, so I will be providing you with some information in the future, as a future school committee member. Very excited to have Project Lead the Way in our middle schools. Also, I want to thank Mayor Hoy in the building department and also the water department and Mr. O'Brien for the fillings, the water filling stations, which are beginning to be installed in all our schools. As of now, Friedman, Taunton High School, Chamberlain, and Galligan have water filling stations, and it looks like the building department is installing about one a week. So we are slowly moving in the right direction as far as having water filling stations in all our schools. And last but not least, this is more of a public service announcement for all our Mulcahy parents and also families or residents that live along Clifford Street. The Columbia Gas will be installing a new gas line that will be servicing the existing Mulcahy Elementary School and also servicing the new facility and the neighbors along Clifford Street. It's, it will impact traffic in the morning and it will impact traffic in the afternoon. So we anticipate as many as two to four police details that will assist parents with pickup and drop-off. Where Mrs. Principal Decuta sent the communication home today to all the parents regarding the guidelines that we're asking them to follow and also letting them know that we will have police on-site to assist with traffic in the morning and the afternoon. So there will be a slight disruption to the morning and afternoon, but in the long run, we're gonna have a beautiful new school for the students at Hopewell and Mulcahy. So a minor inconvenience. And with that, that concludes my report.
Ms. Dougherty?
Uh, Project Lead the Way, if you remember one of my presentations last year, we talked about having elementary's engineering as a STEM program in our elementary schools, and I wrote a grant for a hundred thousand dollars to put a STEM program in our middle schools, which was Project Lead the Way, which is, um, by all means, it's one, it's one of the better programs, research-based, uh, that they're using throughout the country, and we have it here in Taunton now. And it's also something that we're looking to put into our high school. So Project Lead the Way is a STEM program that our students have access to. It's actually, when you think about it, it's kinda taken the place of the woodshops, so to speak, where now all the students will rotate through this STEM program, and it'll help bridge the gap between middle school and high school. When they get to the high school, they do exploratory, they'll have a foundation now.
Thank you.
Motion, we accept the report.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next on the agenda is administrative business, staffing report. Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, subcommittee reports, finance and law, Mr. Martin.
Finance and law met earlier this evening with myself, Mr. Sousa, and Mr. Fury, also in attendance were Mr. Cabral and Ms. Monahan. First item on the agenda was requests for student activity. There were none. Second item was use of facilities. We had maybe one, two, three, four use of facilities, and, uh, they're all appropriate and no action was necessary. Third item on the agenda was bills payable in an amount of eight hundred thousand, four hundred sixty dollars and fifty-three cents. And finally, we had a facilities update from Ms. Monahan. The tennis courts at the Friedman Oakland complex are being refurbished as we speak and will probably be done by the end of next week. Tennis courts at the high school, a meet is being installed by the T M L P to monitor those lights. Unfortunately, we won't be able to use them until after the first hard frost or three consecutive days as Ms. Fagan alluded to because of triple E.
Or the spring.
Or the.
Or the spring. It's getting cold.
Yeah, but playing tennis in the fall is.
Right, right.
Anyway. She also informed us that the, uh, middle school floor at Friedman is done. It's gorgeous, the bleachers are in, the walls have been painted. If you haven't seen it, you gotta take a look at it. It's gorgeous, it really is. The only thing that we're waiting for is we now have electric bleachers similar to what we have at the high school and what we had in the past at the high school. So one of the things I asked Mrs. Monahan to be sure to, uh, see is done is that somebody's trained to use them because in the high school in the past, we had problems with things being under the bleachers, somebody going and using the key to close them, and then it would jam, and it was a maintenance issue of getting the bleachers repaired, and it's expensive. So she will take care of that. Uh, the Bennett, the Bennett School Playground, parts are backordered, and hopefully within the next couple of weeks, that'll be resolved because the parts are backordered. In talking about the Friedman Middle School, uh, middle school floor, Mr. Cabral alluded to the fact that, uh, we're gonna limit what is being used on that floor to keep its, it's now a wood floor versus a turf floor. And, uh, the idea of a cover came up. We have a cover for the high school floor to protect it. So Mr. Sousa made a motion to have administration look into, it was seconded by Mr. Fury, to look into a cover for the Friedman floor. And, uh, just to ballpark figures, Mr. Cabral actually was the assistant superintendent for finance. You wanna, you wanna conclude that?
Actually, I just had a thought, Mr. Martin. The cover, the, the cover's not used daily, so we could.
Right, it's just used when.
Yeah, so I'm thinking we could store the cover at a neutral, at a central location and utilize it as needed at the high school or at Friedman.
But is the cover for the high school that much bigger than?
It's, uh, sections. It strips.
Oh.
Like wallpaper. So you would, so I, let me investigate to see if the cover that we have at the high school would accommodate Friedman because I don't anticipate having events on the same night that would require a cover. We may be able to get away with one and store it at the warehouse and then as needed have it delivered.
Well, the motion that was made by Mr. Sousa was to investigate a cover for the Friedman floor. So whether we purchase a cover or whether we utilize the one we currently have, that's what you're gonna investigate.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's the, uh, report of the finance and law subcommittee.
Motion, we accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Yeah, I just have a question on this, um, thingy here. The invoice warrant, uh, page eighteen, Nerds to Go, eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars. So I'm wondering if this line item is connected to the summer program at the alternative high school and how that fits.
Correct. So that was, so that was paid for through the Twenty-First Century Grant to construct the computer repair shop at the alternative high school. So it provided the workstation, it also covered the cost of the building department to go in and run all the electricity, the equipment, the tools that they'll be using to repair the computers.
So Nerds to Go provided that service?
Correct. They installed, with the building department, they created this, the work stop station for our kids.
And it was paid by the Twenty-First Century Grant, which is the one we talked about at the last meeting that is expiring?
Correct, and I'm happy you brought that up because when we go through the budget process, just so you know, we will be building those programs into the FY twenty-one budget to help cover the, the programs at Parker and at the alternative high school.
Thank you.
Mr. DeMello, you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on page five of, of the warrant, um, I, I was in the audience when the finance subcommittee was meeting, and Mr. Sousa asked about the Dell Financial, hundred forty-six thousand, seven forty-seven, I understand it's the lease payment for the complete year. But right below it, Dell Marketing Software in the amount of thirty-two, seven sixty-three, seventy-six, does that support the purchase or is it totally independent?
I don't have that in my notes, so I'll ask Mrs. Monahan to answer that question, please.
Sure. What that is for, it is actually for the Microsoft Office licenses for all of our desktops and also for, um, if you, if a faculty member would like to have the Microsoft Office Suite for their personal use for, to use in school on their personal laptops. So what it is for the license, Dell sells us the license for Microsoft Office.
Okay, thank you.
Motion, we make, motion, we accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the subcommittee. Aye. Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know where, where to put this, but I'm just gonna bring it up. I had a, I had a homeowner talk to me about Williams Street where there's off and on people parking on cars in the stretch of William, between Williams Street and Gordon Owen, and I thought about this, that there's never been any sign, signage over there for no parking on either side during, and I'm talking about twenty-four seven, never mind school hours because of emergency vehicles, and we have activities on the weekends as well with buses going in and out of there. And I, and I was thinking, from, from County Street, uh, Williams, but from County all the way past the high school, there really should be, that's a narrow road, there really should be no parking on either side. So I was wondering if we could send this to the safety officer? It's really probably a council issue, but I know Mr. Cabral has a direct relationship with the safety officer. So really, on Williams Street from County past the high school, really there should be no parking on either side for multiple reasons. Uh, Williams Street from County all the way past the high school, there really should be no parking on either side, not only Monday through Friday, but really on the weekends as well. We got, uh, out of, out of city buses coming in for the kids going to the athletic events, and, uh, I don't see any reason why there should be parking, but I wonder, would the safety officer be the right person, then he could make a recommendation to the higher authorities?
Yeah, so, uh, Mrs. Monahan, myself, and Mrs. Perry, between the three of us, we'll work with Officer Williams to, you know, get his, get, seek some advisement and discuss a proposal on how we can address that issue.
Thank, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Sousa, just for clarification, you're talking Harris Street to County Street on Williams Street?
Yeah, Williams Street off from Paris all the way to County, uh, County all the way to Harris.
So if Chris has, if Officer Williams has to do a, a study on behalf of the administration, it would be Harris Street, County on Williams?
From on Williams Street, from County all the way to Harris.
Okay.
There should be no parking, that's, I would think, but see what he has to say. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. Ms. Dougherty and Ms. Almeida, please.
Well, like Mr. Sousa, it's, I, I can never know, we had to bring up items that are new, whether they're new business or they should belong somewhere else. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll rely on you to say to me, you should take that up somewhere else on the agenda.
We do have critical items not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours in advance. We could go out of the order.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if this items on your all's minds, we can go that way.
Yeah, that's one of the things we should talk about at our retreat, is where to put these items. So, I mean, I'm certainly would be pleased to wait until critical items section.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty, Ms. Almeida, please. Yes. Well, he didn't actually, yeah, yeah.
Or something like that. But some people have parties on the weekends that live there, there's not enough room in the yard, so they're gonna park on the streets.
That's why I figured out the safety officer figured it out.
So the safety officer only deals when school's in session. Not like if we have sports and things. Do you, do you want to include that to check the sports?
I just wanted to, Mr. Chairman, to you, to you.
Yes, yes, Mrs. Sousa, thank you, Ms. Almeida, Mr. Sousa.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. I just wanted to get the whole picture. I mean, there's also, uh, uh, emergency vehicles have to go down that road, there's, we do have activities on the weekend with different buses from different, other, outer districts. So just take a look at the whole, the whole concept. I, I guess that's, um, it doesn't, just have them take the whole, look at the whole thing, the whole picture. Weekends, week, during the weekend, everything. Thank you.
Very good point, Mr. Sousa. Mr. Mayor, if you would, please. We're on the unfinished items.
Still unfinished?
Ms. Dougherty has a, she has a K, but she's.
She has a K?
We're gonna go to J, though.
Okay.
Let me, yeah, let me pursue the, so critical, under the critical items not anticipated, we put that on the agenda a few years ago for this, because of this very dilemma that we have about where do items go on the agenda that might be new but not so critical? So would you say that critical items, Mr. Chairman, are items on which a person might request action by the committee as opposed to just forward-thinking items? If that makes any sense? Why don't I bring them up and then?
Critical items, it, to me, it means something that can't wait. I, I think.
Yeah, this can't wait.
Well, that, that's fine, I mean.
And, and it's happened since the agenda has been put out.
Correct, correct. And, and new, I think we've tried to get away from new, like, for open meeting law purposes, tried to get away from new business so much, especially, not so much at school committees, you only meet every two weeks, but like at the city council, which meets every week, a lot of times, you know, that's camera time for, for people, so they, they bring things up when really if it's a, if it's a letter from a citizen, it should, we don't, we, we never really refuse anything, but at the same time, it's probably should be, it'd be best put in the, on the agenda. So if you know you're gonna bring it up.
Yeah, so let, let me please forward, and then you can make a ruling, Mr. Chairman, about whether or not it's appropriate here or there or nowhere, it's just very difficult. The first one is, uh, everyone here probably knows Irene Fernandez, who is the woman who has been, um, organizing or instrumentally in our annual memorial service for nine eleven. At the recent nine eleven celebration, she came to me and said that a neighbor of hers, a man named Robert Garrity, had given her, um, two checks. One was for a man who had been injured and she had been raising funds for him, but the second check was for, or is, for a hundred dollars, and she wanted to contribute on Bob's behalf, Robert Garrity's behalf, the hundred dollars to the R O T C. And I think, Mr. Cabral, she did mention it to you, you may not remember, when we were at, at that event. And so what I am doing is presenting, Mr. Cabral, the check from Irene Fernandez, which comes from Bob Garrity for our R O T C, if in fact you would be willing to do that. So there is the check in the envelope. The envelope, please. My, a second item has to do with a recent conversation in the press and probably ongoing about vaping. And in a conversation that I had with Mr. Cabral yesterday at a co-annas meeting, I said that I thought that it would be worth, um, the committee's time to talk about vaping and whether or not we wanted to create a resolution or a motion or something. And it was then that I realized that, um, thank you, Mr. Cabral, that the vaping conversations have been going on in our schools for a little while. So all of that said, what I'd like is to have at our perhaps next meeting, a report from you, Mr. Cabral, about all of the activities that are ongoing in terms of educating our children and their families about the dangers of vaping, if, if there is no objection from the committee.
Actually, this is an item that my, Mrs. Perry and myself, we've been discussing. I don't know if the school board is aware, but, um, one of our SROs has been very instrumental in putting together a PowerPoint. So he rolled it out last week at the Martin Middle School. That was his first test run. So that is something that's gonna be used in all our, in our middle schools and also in our high schools. So there's some other education that we'll be using with our kids to provide them with the hazards or share with them the hazards of vaping. Vaping is new, and there's very little information out there regarding the hazards with vaping. And it's, in, in my opinion, it has been marketed or targeted, it's targeting a specific group, especially with the way it came out originally as being an alternative to, you know, to smoking and avoiding all the hazards that go along with smoking. So as more information comes out and as we're learning about people bootlegging vape cartridge, I don't know enough about it, but the cartridges that they put in the device, and we want to make sure that our students, the public, parents are aware of the hazards of vaping. And also, I gotta commend, I believe it's Steve Turner's group, the C C I T, that where they do a presentation called Hidden in Plain Sight, where you really get a firsthand, where you see how vaping is really targeting a, a specific group when you can conceal it. The way you can, you can conceal it even in clothing, so to the point where it'd be very difficult for parents, educators to identify or to even notice that a child is vaping. So we're being proactive. Uh, I probably haven't done a good job as far as educating the school committee with what we're doing regarding that area, but we'll have a full presentation ready for you, Charlotte.
Great, that's very important, and I have one more item, if you'll indulge me, Mr. Mayor.
So far, you're okay so far, two for two?
The, the last one has, so, I, I am a chair of the elementary subcommittee, Mrs. Almeida is chair of the high school subcommittee, and in that role, we do several things, but the one most important thing, I think that, that I do anyway as elementary subcommittee chair, is to attend school improvement plan presentations that we had agreed would be held at the various schools, from Letty School all the way up through to the high school, including the alternative high school. And I have found in this past year, um, while, while the expectation is that the committee members will attend, uh, the subcommittee members will attend those school improvement plan presentations, any committee member is welcome to attend and participate and ask questions, and they're always very interesting, and the schools really pull out all the stops when they are preparing those school improvement plan meetings. And sometimes there aren't enough of us attending those meetings, and so it just seems like a lot of work for a few people. So I was thinking that maybe the subcommittees could get together, or the chairs, or Mr. the subcommittees could get together, or the chairs, or Mr. Cabral, and Mr. Barata, whomever, to, um, look at the way in which those school improvement plan presentations are made, so that we can maximize at least school committee edification, um, and I know, Mr. Cabral, I had mentioned this to you in the middle of last year, and you said that you had talked with your, I believe you said that you had talked with principals at some point in time about this, but we are anticipating that these will be scheduled come early spring, winter and spring, so we want to be sure that what, the way in which these are put forward, maximize our opportunities to hear what the schools have to say, does all, any of that make sense?
Ms. Almeida, do you wanna add to that, being the chair of the high school subcommittee?
I, I'm not following what you're saying, Mrs. Doherty.
Saying is that nobody goes to the school improvement plan meetings, and it's a lot of work on the, well, a few of us go.
There's three members on, on the subcommittee.
They don't, we don't always get full attendance, that's the thing.
And, um, that's why, and other members can attend, but they're two-year plans, aren't they, Mr. Cabral? I thought they've been two-year per round, so there wouldn't be a plan going forward this year, they will be the following year, correct?
We've.
Cause we, we approve two-year plans. One year now? Okay.
This might not be critical, but I'll let Mr. Demello talk.
Just, just as a follow-up, Ms. Doherty, I have had the opportunity to be at many, but I think maybe expanding upon, you have a four o'clock start and a six o'clock start, and sometimes you're in the east part of Taunton, you gotta get to the other side of Taunton, it, it takes away from that first two-hour block from that presentation, and ending it, or cutting it short, to be at the other school in time for the six o'clock start, and remember, we have parents there that are waiting for us, and students there waiting for us, along with the teachers, so, maybe expanding upon that is probably part of it, too?
We just need to rethink the way in which they're done, and make sure that we all agree that at the very least, the subcommittees will be in attendance, and that doesn't always happen, yes, everybody attends from time to time, that's absolutely correct, thank you, Mr. Demello, uh, but, I don't know, it's a lot of work on the part of the school folks, as you point out, parents, students stay after school, it's late, they're doing presentations, and sometimes there is one or two of us there.
Mr. Sousa?
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Mayor, I, um, I agree with my colleague, I think the, um, underlying point here is not the split between them, I think the underlying point is sometimes there's scheduling conflicts between some of the committee members, so, I think the, I think the easiest thing to do is the chair works it out with the, they're already pre-scheduled, so that the, the chairs of the subcommittees can, um, can maybe call the members, or have the administration call the members, make sure that they're gonna be there, or.
Actually, the, they, they have not been scheduled, because we were gonna wait until the, after the election, and then schedule.
Oh, for the, for the, and I know that, I've, I'm not on the elementary, but I went through several of them, and, um, I think, I think it was just a scheduling conflict among a few other, of the subcommittee members, so, I don't think it's a big deal, we, we just, need to just remind, and, uh, the chairs call the people and make sure that the administration make sure everyone's gonna be there, thank you.
You may, um, superintendent, if you will, uh, one of your principal meetings, you might ask for input from the principals about some thoughts that they have about the way these have been going, and what it is they have as ideas if they feel like they wanna make some change.
And if I could add, you know, from what I learned about these and the ones I've attended over the years, it, it's, it's very diff, it's a, I think you really want, what you really need to decide is whether you really wanna do these or not, to put these, there's a ton of work that goes into these each year, and I, I think the schools at times get disheartened when you only have a handful of people show up and people have to leave early, and, um, they really, if you're gonna do them, I, I think it need, everybody needs to attend, um, and really give it the time it deserves, cause these people put a lot of time into them, and, and I'll leave it at that. Back to the, where are we, Cahal? We're on Letty School right now.
Mr. Mayor, we're on, uh?
Sure, great, good, sorry, Mr. Mayor, was that a question, if we really want this to continue? Because I fully support it, absolutely. Okay, I just think that if you're gonna, there's a ton of work that goes into these things, and, you know, I don't know if it's, if it's completely, with all the work that principals and the schools have to do today, they, they put a lot of time into these, to, you know, to, to put on a good impression of their school, but if they're not gonna be given the full attention of the committee, their time could be much better spent doing something else, that's all, that's my only point.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and, and as a freshman on the school committee, it was very valuable to me to be in the schools, to listen to the issues and the strengths and the weaknesses that were presented to us, so, for me, it was an invaluable experience, so, if I'm lucky to be here next term, I'd definitely like to do it all over again, thank you.
Yeah, if I could just comment, too, so I've been in this district long enough, where I remember delivering my school improvement plan in Mr. Martin's office, uh, just me and the subcommittee, then it evolved to presentations before the school board, where we'd bring staff, we'd bring parents, and then it evolved to the current format that we have now, so, um, as someone who's been in that, on that side, I haven't had to schedule the visit to the school, but I know the amount of work, uh, I also know the anxiety that builds up in the principals and the staff, uh, to put on that presentation for the school board, making it worthwhile, so that you get a real sense of what goes on in our schools on a day-to-day basis, so I will reach out to my principals, I have a pretty good sense on what my principals are gonna wanna do when it comes to the school improvement plan, and I will collect their information, and I will bring it back, and we'll work with the school board to put on a presentation, or to come up with a process that provides you with the insight and the information you need, so that you know what is going on and how you can support, or how we support what goes on in our classrooms.
Thank you. Update on the Letty School playground.
So, thank you, so in your packet, based on the feedback we received at the last meeting, I had Mrs. Moynihan, uh, work with our designer, Jason Corbett from Little Tykes, and, uh, provided you with some information, and also, we reached out to Donna DiCarpo, and I also did check in with Principal Belanger regarding her recommendation, so, pretty much, what you don't have in your, in your packet is, we received an updated quote, I believe it was yesterday, from Little Tykes, so, to do a full poured rubber ground floor would be ninety-seven thousand dollars, I believe it was ninety-six and change, so ninety-seven thousand dollars would give us the full play structure with a floor or a ground cover, would give us a ground floor or ground cover that is completely rubber, that students in wheelchairs, students in walkers, students with limited mobility can access corner to corner of the playground and access the structure. For sixty-two seven, you, we would get a play structure with paths to access the play structure, that child in a wheelchair, or that child in a walker would not be able to follow their friends corner to corner. I also wanna make, be mindful, and make the school committee mindful, that we keep adding pieces to our play structures, we add panels that are ADA accessible, that students in wheelchairs, students in walkers can access, so when we do add those panels, we have to provide a path, so by committing the full ninety-seven thousand dollars, we would have a play structure that is accessible corner to corner for our students, and provide us with the ability to add panels that they can access with their peers, so if you were gonna ask me tonight what my recommendation would be, my recommendation would be to go with the play structure that has a completely poured rubber floor.
Move the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. Which made second on discussion, Mr. Sousa, no, I'm sorry, you were first, I had you first, good.
Okay. I agree a hundred percent with Mr. Cabral, because our children need to have total accessibility to play area. I mean, if any of you went to Letty School and saw how these children love to be in the playground, and some of them don't have the accessibility that's needed to get into some of these toys that they like to play with, like the roundabouts and those kinds of things, cause you have all that, uh, what do you call that, wood chips or whatever, you can't, they can't walk over it, they need this, they need this, they are little, they need this, this is what we should do, it's the right thing to do.
Mr. Demello?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I fully support the motion, I'm so glad that two weeks ago, I was able to first table it, then postpone the vote, so we just saved ten thousand and seven hundred dollars, thank you, I really appreciate that.
Some strong parliamentary procedure, Mr. Demello. Mr. Fury?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, when we had this in the finance and law subcommittee a few weeks ago, I came out very strongly in favor of total poured rubber, as somebody who has some minor accessibility issues themselves, I feel a lot safer with that kind of surface, it's, it's a lot easier to grip, I tend to use sneakers more often than regular shoes because of my knee replacement, and, uh, it's not only a, a good, a good grip for the, for the feet, but if, if you fall, it's a lot soft, softer to land on than the, than the wood chips, and I, I agree that the poured rubber is the safest way to go.
See you on the merry-go-round, Mr. Fury. Mr. O'Brien, Chairman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was trying to look up the name of a playground I go to all, with my children all the time. In your bed, in your bed.
I was gonna say, you, in your bed, do you talk about that?
Yes, it's, I can't remember the name of it, but it's, uh, it has a complete rubber floor around it, I bring my little Stella, and one thing that I, and especially, I'm glad to see, we saved a little in waiting, um, but if you think about play activities of children, regardless of their mobility, they don't just wanna use the different structures, but they also want to interact with their peers, and for universal design for access would be is that the children get equal, I witness it when I go to that playground on Pulp's Island, where the children interact with each other plus the structure, so, I think that it would be a very long, wise thing in the long run to allow the children, because there's a lot of play going on in and out of the area, and if a child was only to kinda, it's almost like being on a dock in a pond, you can't swim, but you can walk on the dock, wouldn't you like to go with your peers in the pond, so even if you couldn't swim, give them a life vest, so this gives that child an opportunity to have complete access and interaction with their peers, maybe a friend or another peers up on the play structure and they're playing a game, if I'm in a wheelchair or walker or other mobility assistance, and I can't get off of my path, it's severely limiting my ability to play tag or other things, so, we don't often think like children, but I get the, I'm blessed to be able to see it, like every Saturday, and there's a lot of interaction and cross-pollination that we as adults may say, yeah, we can get there, but then, we're not little, we're not playing hide-and-seek or whatever they play, you know, make-believe power, Paw Patrol, whatever they call Paw Patrol.
Thank you, on, on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Next is action item?
Me.
That's you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, yes. We have one from February, the strategic planning process on hold, that's still pending, we have one from May, the safety offer to look at signage at Letty, pending now, hopefully the officer will be at Williams Street as well, um, Ms. Doherty, please.
Yeah, just on that, so it was on August twenty-first, when we received information in a diagram about, uh, the report of the safety officer and blinking lights, et cetera, et cetera, and I don't see any activity going on there, so, I mean, I have no idea how long it takes from the time we say, "Go ahead," to the time it takes to complete the work, but, I guess I imagine that because we received the information on August twenty-first, that it would be done by the opening of school, so what, what's the status, that's I guess what I'm asking.
No, if I, if I remember the memo correctly, and again, I, I may ask Ms. Moynihan to assist, if I remember the memo correctly, I believe Officer Williams provided a diagram, but I believe it was still being investigated, I don't think it was, I don't believe it was finalized, I believe he was still investigating, if, is the memo attached to it?
Isn't that a state road?
Yes.
Yes, I believe he was still working with some engineers, or still investigating whether or not all those signs would be, would be allowed. I believe he met with a consultancy firm, that's where he provided the mock-up, but as far as I remember, he's still, it's still an ongoing matter.
Does the state's involved?
And we, and we, and we maintain regular communication with them.
I can clarify, too, it's, it's Mass DOT has jurisdiction beyond, and you come back from where, a street, you head past a gas station, there's a section there near the railroad tracks, I can't remember where, so Mass DOT ultimately will have to, uh, call, uh, refer back to Officer Williams, so there's probably an additional step, because it's a state highway, if you remember when they redid the whole sidewalks and roadways, that was a Mass DOT project, that's technically state highway.
So, so the memo says, among other things, it explains, explains the layout, but it says, "The next step will be to present the Letty School zone layout to city council, so they can request this to be a city ordinance, then move to the legal department for additional approval." So, do we know that it's gone to the city council, Mr. Mayor?
I, I don't, off the top of my head, if.
And this memo's dated August fourteenth, actually.
Oftentimes, it has to go to ordinance, too, for signage, so, that, that does take some time, so.
Could we rely on you to move, move it forward?
If you could send it over to the council meeting, um, we could certainly talk about that this week.
Thank you.
Motion?
Yep.
All right, so does the motion refer this matter to the city council for an update? Is there a second?
Safety officer as well.
I think he's already involved, but he can certainly, um, he can.
You count a vote or do I?
Motion, motion refer to the city council, the safety officer, get from, but, just to re, where it is going.
On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Next is action item?
Me.
That's you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, yes. We have one from February, the strategic planning process on hold, that's still pending, we have one from May, the safety offer to look at signage at Letty, pending now, hopefully the officer will be at Williams Street as well, um, Ms. Doherty, please.
Yeah, just on that, so it was on August twenty-first, when we received information in a diagram about, uh, the report of the safety officer and blinking lights, et cetera, et cetera, and I don't see any activity going on there, so, I mean, I have no idea how long it takes from the time we say, "Go ahead," to the time it takes to complete the work, but, I guess I imagine that because we received the information on August twenty-first, that it would be done by the opening of school, so what, what's the status, that's I guess what I'm asking.
No, if I, if I remember the memo correctly, and again, I, I may ask Ms. Moynihan to assist, if I remember the memo correctly, I believe Officer Williams provided a diagram, but I believe it was still being investigated, I don't think it was, I don't believe it was finalized, I believe he was still investigating, if, is the memo attached to it?
Isn't that a state road?
Yes.
Yes, I believe he was still working with some engineers, or still investigating whether or not all those signs would be, would be allowed. I believe he met with a consultancy firm, that's where he provided the mock-up, but as far as I remember, he's still, it's still an ongoing matter.
Does the state's involved?
And we, and we, and we maintain regular communication with them.
I can clarify, too, it's, it's Mass DOT has jurisdiction beyond, and you come back from where, a street, you head past a gas station, there's a section there near the railroad tracks, I can't remember where, so Mass DOT ultimately will have to, uh, call, uh, refer back to Officer Williams, so there's probably an additional step, because it's a state highway, if you remember when they redid the whole sidewalks and roadways, that was a Mass DOT project, that's technically state highway.
So, so the memo says, among other things, it explains, explains the layout, but it says, "The next step will be to present the Letty School zone layout to city council, so they can request this to be a city ordinance, then move to the legal department for additional approval." So, do we know that it's gone to the city council, Mr. Mayor?
I, I don't, off the top of my head, if.
And this memo's dated August fourteenth, actually.
Oftentimes, it has to go to ordinance, too, for signage, so, that, that does take some time, so.
Could we rely on you to move, move it forward?
If you could send it over to the council meeting, um, we could certainly talk about that this week.
Thank you.
Motion?
Yep.
All right, so does the motion refer this matter to the city council for an update? Is there a second?
Safety officer as well.
I think he's already involved, but he can certainly, um, he can.
You count a vote or do I?
Motion, motion refer to the city council, the safety officer, get from, but, just to re, where it is going.
On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Next is action item?
Me.
That's you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, yes. We have one from February, the strategic planning process on hold, that's still pending, we have one from May, the safety offer to look at signage at Letty, pending now, hopefully the officer will be at Williams Street as well, um, Ms. Doherty, please.
Yeah, just on that, so it was on August twenty-first, when we received information in a diagram about, uh, the report of the safety officer and blinking lights, et cetera, et cetera, and I don't see any activity going on there, so, I mean, I have no idea how long it takes from the time we say, "Go ahead," to the time it takes to complete the work, but, I guess I imagine that because we received the information on August twenty-first, that it would be done by the opening of school, so what, what's the status, that's I guess what I'm asking.
No, if I, if I remember the memo correctly, and again, I, I may ask Ms. Moynihan to assist, if I remember the memo correctly, I believe Officer Williams provided a diagram, but I believe it was still being investigated, I don't think it was, I don't believe it was finalized, I believe he was still investigating, if, is the memo attached to it?
Isn't that a state road?
Yes.
Yes, I believe he was still working with some engineers, or still investigating whether or not all those signs would be, would be allowed. I believe he met with a consultancy firm, that's where he provided the mock-up, but as far as I remember, he's still, it's still an ongoing matter.
Does the state's involved?
And we, and we, and we maintain regular communication with them.
I can clarify, too, it's, it's Mass DOT has jurisdiction beyond, and you come back from where, a street, you head past a gas station, there's a section there near the railroad tracks, I can't remember where, so Mass DOT ultimately will have to, uh, call, uh, refer back to Officer Williams, so there's probably an additional step, because it's
this job, so I don't know if we should change that sentence, or just strike it altogether. That's my only comment on that, Mr. Chairman.
All righty.
I would prefer to strike it.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
No.
Mr. Fiore in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we accept this document as amended.
Motion made, and seconded, further discussion, seeing now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, congratulations, Mr. Cabral, well done. Critical, we already did critical items?
Yes, we did.
We already did critical items?
Well...
Is it really, has it gotten more critical?
If I might, Mr. Cabral, we have adopted a fine budget, as you pointed out in your budget presentation, I should've asked this question during your report, and several new positions were created in that budget, including four team chairs, I believe, school year just starting, what's the status of that? Do we create job descriptions, the job description through that process comes here, and then after the adoption of job description, we reach out to hire people, are there any, is there anybody acting in those jobs at the moment?
We don't have anyone acting specifically in that job, so a job description will have to be created. We have a hybrid position that does a portion of that job in the high school, but this job will be full team chair, so we will, we are in the process of developing a job description, and as you explained, it will be coming to the committee for...
So what is the hybrid position at the high school?
It's the high school assists with the administration of testing, and also, you're familiar with the position.
So it'll be a little bit of time before those people come fully on board, so the previous processes, guidance counselors do the team chairs, I think.
Guidance counselors, administration, support.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have, scheduled on the agenda is an executive session, and I'll let someone please make the motion, because it's...
Mr. Mayor, motion to go into executive session, number one, to move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with the superintendent, and number two, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and to convene an open session.
Second.
Motion to be made on roll call vote, Ms. Salma?
Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida votes yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
Yes, we will reconvene in open session at the conclusion of the executive session, executive session.
Here's Ms. Doherty.
Sorry.
Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
On roll call vote, Ms. Salma?
Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mrs. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida votes yes, Mr. Chairman O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan?
Yes.
For the record, no votes were taken in the executive session, Ms. Salma? Good, floor is yours.
A motion to extend the superintendent's contract to twenty...
June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
June thirtieth to twenty, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, is there further discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, another discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Martin? Mrs. Almeida votes yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.